Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have our city council study session. The first on the agenda is Van Born Corridor Project. Stu, would you like to begin? Oh, he's Tom.
Hello.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, hi, thanks. So just really quick to introduce it for the council. As requested previously, when we discussed the Van Born Project Committee, I know there were some questions about participation from the city of Taylor. So we've arranged to invite the mayor of Taylor and members of their economic development team here this evening to discuss with you. We also have members of our steering committee for the Van Born Project on. So everybody's here to answer any questions you may have, concerns. And I know they'll be happy to discuss with you, so.
Let me unmute the mayor here, Rick Sellers.
There you go, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, did you want to begin it or I'm not sure what to do with the presentation.
Sure, well, I will just start by just giving an overview. We started this process, I think, a couple of years ago now, and we've gone through a lot of starts and stops. And I think most recently, there was some communications that either the city of Taylor or the city of Taylor, members of city council were not interested in proceeding with the some of the improvements or potential improvements to the Van Born Road corridor. So we brought in a couple of members of our economic development team. I believe our city council chairman, Tim Woolley, is also on the call. But I guess just to keep it somewhat short and sweet, the city of Taylor is very much still interested in working in a partnership with the city of Dearborn Heights to make some necessary improvements to Van Born Road. I think we were collectively working with Wade Trim as our engineering partner, and they've been a great partner. So we're all in, we're still interested and happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if Tim's on the call, I can't see everybody, so if he wants to add anything.
Does he have, he doesn't have a picture, I don't think.
Yep, his video is there, Tim Keys.
No, Tim Keys is with Economic Development and Tim Woolley is our city council chairman.
I thought Tim Woolley here somewhere, oh, there he is, okay, let me unmute him. I'm sorry, council chair.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
No, my sentiments are exactly with the mayor. I've talked to multiple council members, we're all on board, we have been from the get go. You know, we understood, we were, you know, under the standing, there were some possible shortfalls with funding and all that stuff. But, you know, I can, I've spoke to a couple of council members today, myself included. We would love to continue this program or project and with definitely open arms. I grew up off of Van Born, so that would definitely be, definitely be great to me and a lot of my old former neighbors and stuff. That, if we can give that area a shot in the arm, I think that would be benefits both of us, both communities.
So right now, exactly where are, well, okay, I've got Councilman Abdullah. Has a question, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not sure who'd answer this, and I asked this same question at the last meeting that we had in regards to this. And probably the best two probably are two mayors to ask this. I actually, just to go on public record, I've been very disappointed in where this project has gone. Because the initial meeting, from my recollection, was 2017, but actually, I think we met even before then. And this was a great thing, and it went in the papers, and all the residents were excited, and all the business people were excited. And here we are, and we can't use COVID as an excuse, because COVID has only been in the last nine month or 10, 12 months, or whatever you. This started in early 17, if not 16, and we're still no further today, at least visually to the average resident, than we were back then, and I think it's just wrong personally. We in Dearborn Heights have always been accused of not taking care of the South Heights as good as the North Heights. I don't believe in that, and I believe all of our council members don't believe in that. So I was really excited about this, the fact that the residents in the South Heights are going to get some major improvements, much needed improvements on the road such as Van Born. And here we are, four years later, still in, you know, planning stages. And not one thing, at least visually, if I was a resident driving by, has changed. So I don't know who could answer this, but they put up, you know, for COVID, in China, they put up a whole hospital within a month and a half. So I'm not saying something like that should have been done in a week or two or three or four. But here we are, four years later, and we're still talking about it, honestly, and bluntly disappointed. Thank you.
I have Councilman Muscat.
Oh, thank you, council chair. Speaking of funding, you know, the last time we had, we had meetings and it was going to cost anywhere between a half a million to a million and a half per mile. Now, I don't know how we're going to be able to fund that if it's probably a higher amount today since our first few meetings that we had. I just don't understand where we're going to get the money from. And if it's a million and a half, is it a million and a half for each city, which would be $3 million? Or is it a million and a half split two ways? Okay, so that's what I don't know, and funding is a big, big concern. Well, I mean, we can't even fund CSOs without going out and getting, borrowing money. So, you know, that's, that's a big thing, and we should be able to be petitioning Wayne County or MDOT or whoever it is to redo the roadway. If we're, if we're going to put that kind of money in it, I want to see the road replaced. That's, if anybody can answer that question, those questions.
Can anybody answer that? Mr. Brooks. And I'm going to ask that we use the application for the hand, because it's hard to see if somebody's raising their hand. There's a lot of people in this meeting.
Well, the corridor improvement plan that was put together starting in 17 and the report was completed in 18, yeah, recognize there was, there were short term goals, kind of midterm goals and long term goals. And the long term goal is to get the road reconstructed. But what we're talking here, it's going to take steps. And what's in front of the council now is we're trying to do some of the short term goals and working on the the overlay district and work on the zoning, work on the ordinance, so the two communities have consistent planning tools to move it forward. So what we're talking about today is getting started with some of the preliminary stuff, but the, it's a long term goal is to get the road repaved, but it's going to take time, yes. And funding sources and grants and working Wayne County. But if you want to start seeing some improvements in terms of looking at the businesses and the businesses' facades improving, you know, street lighting, you know, landscaping, you know, and looking at the different ordinances between the two communities so they're consistent. And this is what we're trying to get moving forward today. With the goal of getting the road paved.
That's really not my, that's, that's good for one part, but the funding part of how much it's going to cost per mile? And is that going to be divided in half, or is it put together, or what? Is it a million and a half per city, is it a million and a half split two ways? And again, where is the money going to come from?
Well, that, that's, 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 it's going to take time, it's going to take time to.
Look, I don't want to spend money if we can't afford to go ahead with the project. I mean, before, we pour money into engineering and then don't do the project, I don't know what we're going to pay Wade Trim to do all this engineering. And all of a sudden, we come up and say, well, we don't have the money to fund the project. Well, there's money, good money thrown at that. So, you know, we need to find out if we're going to be able to afford this project.
Once again, I'm going to ask you to use the hand on your app if you want to comment.
So, you know, that, that's a big thing, I mean, we're always doing studies and spending money, big money.
This is not, this is not a study, this is to look at the ordinances, land uses between the two cities, get them in sync with each other, and start seeing some improvements with the businesses in the corridor. And in the meantime, work on getting the funding.
So what is this going to cost us to put all this together before we go for funding?
Well, this proposal is for $30,000, $34,000 to work with the overlay, the overlay district, work with the ordinances. We can, we have people from our planning group if we want to get more detail. Tifa is paying for half of the Dearborn Heights share. All right, so that's roughly $8,500, and the $8,500 out of the general fund for Dearborn Heights.
That Tom from Tifa, he has raised his hand, would you like to add something more, sir?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of clarify back to the point Dan made. There were the short term goals, midterm goals, long term goals, basically think of it as phases. We're at phase one only, the road stuff, that, that's a far off phase. Yet, we have to take kind of the baby steps first, and then we'd come up with the ideas of funding and whatnot for the roads and kind of tackle that project later, but there's kind of the low hanging fruit here of ordinances and whatnot that were discussed that we can, we can tackle now. What we're deciding now doesn't have anything to do with the road later, these are other aspects of the project that we can take care of easily and quickly. But the concern is there for the road, definitely, there is a concern, you know, the funding issues and whatnot, they all have to be tackled. But this, these are kind of separate but related in a way, but, but these are technically separate issues that we're trying to tackle now to get done and out of the way, and show some movement and progress on those things that can be done.
Okay, I've got some people on council here that would like to speak next, we have Councilman Bazey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have the same concern as brought up with the funding, but also, I'm a little confused, you know. I don't know if you remember a few years back, when they, when this project came in front of us, they did have the different phases, you know, phase one, two, and three, or they have like three choices, you know, which choice we want to go with. And so with that, obviously, there was money spent to get those proposals. So why are we doing it again? Was that the same thing? I, I'm, I'm a little confused that, you know, when it was presented to us, it was presented in a different way. And now we're saying that we need some, we need funding for phase one or pre-phase one. I'm a little confused, I don't know if we're paying for this twice.
Like Tom at Tifa would like to answer that.
Yeah, Councilman, it's a good question. I think maybe there's some misconceptions out there, that first phase that we talked about a couple of years ago, what we were doing then, that was the public engagement phase. We met with residents and officials, and also a few of you were there, where that was the phase where we were asking the residents of the two cities, what do you want to see on Van Born Road? What would you like, what do you prefer? And that was all conceptual stuff that was come up with, the proposals, kind of as to what to go for as a goal. That's what, that was, now coming back, it's not that we're coming back with the same thing again, we're coming back with the next step. Okay, let's start to implement some of these steps, like ordinance, ordinance and the zoning is the first step that we have to take before tackling the road issue and stuff, but that's something that was done before was, was all conceptual work, public engagement, getting the residents feedback. And so what you saw in those proposals were things that were developed by Wade Trim to say, based on what we learned from the public and from the city officials, these are some concepts that we can work towards in the future. I'm hoping that that kind of helps spell that out, that wasn't, there wasn't any engineering, there wasn't any detail, it was all, it was all conceptual at the time.
Yeah, man, I'm up for new ordinance or improved ordinance for Van Born. I mean, we do have to clean up the road, it's, it doesn't look good, it looks like third country.
And this, and this, this, what we're asking for Wade Trim to do is, is to actually do the work of looking at Taylor's ordinances and our ordinances, and meshing them together with something that's acceptable for both cities. So that's where this proposal in front of us is at this point.
I have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and city of Taylor, mayor and council, thank you very much for attending. One key thing, anybody who's familiar with Van Born, I'm sure knows the drainage on Van Born, what, what seems to happen over years is that the, the road is crowned, and then there really aren't enough sewers on the road. And so the water collects, it freezes, it thaws, and the asphalt breaks up right at the apron to the driveways of the businesses. So I know that's, is, is it correct to say that the redoing the road and possibly the porous road, putting in a porous pavement is the most expensive part of the project?
But again, that's, that's the, the long term goal, and the design of the road with discussions with Wayne County and the two cities, you know, will make the determination what, what that cross section is going to look like. But again, we got, we need to really, like we talked, work on, working on the zoning ordinances. You start making the, the businesses spruce up a little bit, you know, get new facades. You start putting some energy in this corridor. I think people driving down Van Born, they see the businesses improving, will attract people, and the road will come, it'll come with time. But there's a lot of things you can do very inexpensively and start making, making this a very attractive corridor.
And Dan, would we, we would want to do the road first before any like, you know, park benches and things like that, or doesn't matter, we want, we want to see.
You can, you can do some, you can do some landscaping that's independent of the road improvements. I wouldn't do a lot of, I would not do a lot of hardscape behind the curb, you know, but if there's some tree planting, you know, some benches, if you want to put in some respite areas. But you really, to make, make the biggest improvement now is work on the ordinances, work on the zoning, and, and start guiding the resident or the businesses of how they can improve their, their businesses and attract patrons.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, we have next is Councilman Abdullah.
Just one more note, one more thing that I wanted to mention, I, I'd like to see this, and I hate to use that type of an analogy, but, you know, when COVID hit, you know, the whole, the United States of America was all over it, try to get a vaccine out, and then now it looks like we're close to it. I'm not saying this is the same thing, but I would like to see a lot more urgency with this. Like I said, we started with this thing in 2016. These residents have been dealing with that type of a street, I'm in the real estate business myself, so I've used that street multiple times showing properties. Having it look like that for years and years and years. And then those same residents have also dealt with the Ekor's Creek, and for years and years and years, they've been told it'll be resolved, it'll be resolved, it'll be resolved, here's what's coming, here's what we're analyzing, here's what we're looking into, but nothing's happening. So I'd like to see all of us as administration, and all of us are responsible, because all of us have been either elected or appointed to these positions, and we all had the responsibility to do what's right on behalf of the residents. It is shameful on all of us, myself included, that this thing is not resolved and not going much faster than it has been. I'm very, very disappointed with how fast it's been going, because again, to me, I see nothing, nothing's happened. I mean, there've been all kinds of meetings, but nothing's happening, no vaccine.
Next, we have Councilman Muscat.
Mr. Brooks, you mentioned something about grants. Have it, has, have we looked into getting grants for this project? And the second question is, when we're talking about facades for the, the businesses, who's going to be responsible to do that? Is that going to be up to the businesses to redo the front of their, their buildings?
Right, right, this, this will give them guidance in terms of so that there, there's a theme in the corridor, okay? And when, and regarding the road and grant, that's something we have to work on in the next, in the next phases, you know. You know, what, if we can get something from the federal government, I don't know, if we get something from state, some, some road money from county.
One more for that.
Grants, but, but to do that, we got to get started, all right?
I, I agree, but, you know, again, telling a, a business that, you know, you got a, an engine business down there that kind of looks bad, but, you know, if these, these places can't afford to redo the front of their buildings, what do you do to them?
Well, I, well, maybe some of the planners can speak on successes they've had with some of these types of projects. But I think you, it's kind of like your, if you improve your personal property, you know, sometimes your neighbor sees that and they'll want to improve theirs to some degree, you know, some of it, you know, I, I don't think you can force people to improve it as long as it's within the ordinances, but once they want to make some improvements, they've got some guidance and, and start having some character with this corridor.
All right.
That's the goal.
And we have Councilman Winstall, and then we're going to try and wrap this up, we're going over time, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. One thing about the facades being on a planning commission for a very long time is you can come up with an ordinance and, and any new work or construction that, that justifies following an ordinance, you can follow that on new construction and repair work to start with. Any kind of remodeling would be following a new ordinance as far as facade and any kind of new construction. But second thing I wanted to bring up is, Mr. Brooks, both cities, Taylor and Dearborn Heights, obviously, goes without saying, gives Wade Trim quite a bit of business. How about Wade Trim doing this for our cities for no, no charge?
Well, I can't answer that, that's not mine.
Can we look into that?
I, I don't think that's, that's fair, I think you, you're looking for a service, it's a really valuable service.
Well, good reduction in cost.
Well, I can only talk to my, my supervisors, but I think the value here, you know, you're, you're getting a lot of value for this corridor with, with this with looking at the overlay district.
Yeah, it benefits both the, all three, Taylor, Dearborn Heights, and Wade Trim. Just, just a thought, we should look into it. Thank you.
Questions from the council members? At this time, I will open it up to public comment or to the public. We have Vince here, did you have a question, oops, I'm sorry, I muted by mistake, sir, if you could do it again. Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, council. My question is, is where has Ford Land Development been during this? And also, I want to ask Taylor, has there been any delays or dragging of the feet on Dearborn Heights side of this deal? And if so, what are we going to do to correct that? And how do you clean up an area that's nothing but car lots?
Would someone like to answer that from Taylor?
Madam Chair, I don't know if I, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, mayor.
Thank you. Let me, let me try to answer the first one with Ford Land. I know Ford Land has been involved in some of the preliminary meetings. That was like, that was earlier on, we have not talked to them recently, at least the city of Taylor has not. In terms of dragging of the feet, I guess was the question. No, I don't think, I don't think there's been any intentional delays. I, we are here, myself, council chairman for the city of Taylor, and a couple of our economic development representatives, just to clearly communicate that we want all of this just as much as the city of Dearborn Heights does. I think that was the concern that was expressed to us, that there was some rumbling that Taylor was not interested in proceeding. We just want to make sure that you guys are aware that we are behind this 100%. We believe that this is a partnership between the city of Taylor, the city of Dearborn Heights, as well as Wayne County, as Van Born Road is a county road. We would like their input and potentially find out what funds they have available. But the, the question today that we're looking at is really starting to build the blueprint and designing a blueprint to succeed in the phases that were mentioned earlier. And just so we're clear, the city of Taylor is 100% on board with us.
Thank you.
Go here, hold on a minute, let me unmute you, mayor, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I want to offer a suggestion that I think eight, the $8,000 coming out of the general fund, it's not going to make or break us, but I would suggest that the council put a stipulation that you want in four or five months to Wade and Trim, to Tifa, and invite Taylor also, and let's see what we're getting and how they've progressed with this funding. I think it would be a fair request, but let's put some dates and motivation in the team. But I will tell you that there's many businesses along the Van Born Corridor on the Dearborn Heights side. One of them that is just fired about, fired up about this is Lisa Corte. And I will tell you, she's made outreach to a lot of businesses, and I think you're going to see some really progressive thing happening on the Dearborn Heights side. But it's important that both communities work together to upgrade it, or we're going to have nothing but used car lots all the way from Inglester to the border.
What was thought is that? Yeah, that, that's, that's part of Dearborn Heights's problem for allowing that.
Well, we, we put a moratorium and it was overwritten, but let's, rather than blame council people or mayors or whatever, let's get this thing moving.
I agree, I agree.
I also agree.
Guys, we have Arthur Mullin, you did put your hand up at one point, do you still want to speak? Let me unmute you, and then we'll have Nancy Breyer next, go ahead, whoops, sorry, sir, go ahead.
Sorry about that, thank you very much, my name's Arthur Mullin, and I work with Dan Brooks at Wade Trim, and I just wanted to help maybe clarify a few things, so kind of the process, and I'll be very quick, I know you're running out of time. The idea here is for us to be able to improve the land use along the corridor, we have to also not just focus on the corridor itself, but the properties adjacent to the corridor. And so the idea of an overlay district is that it gives the regulatory approvals and power to be able to adjust what people are doing on the land side of the road, so that we can start to encourage some improvement to the property owners. So some of that would include some aesthetic requirements in an overlay district, reducing the parking requirement so there isn't as much parking lots, that landscaping, buffering and screening, looking at allowing some activities as a right, site lighting. So that the focus here on, on this activity for this part of the project between the two communities is to deal with the regulatory side of the issues to be able to start to improve the aesthetic look of the road. It's not to, it's not that phase to deal with the construction of the road improvements, that's a later phase. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Breyer? Nancy Breyer?
Yes, yes, I'm concerned because, as they say, we've been doing this for four years now, nothing's been done. The problem has existed since the late 1800s. The Native Americans at that time dug deep, trenched it out, and widened it. We should never have built houses in that area. And the other thing is, why would anyone want to start a business and get stuck with an assessment? That's my comment, thank you.
Public comment, are you commenting as a public?
Me?
Yes, you've already asked several questions, are you commenting as a public?
Well, I'd like to know when we're going to start the funding, might as well just start, that's my comment as a public citizen.
All right, any further questions, comments from the public before we move on to our next part of the study session? I see none, so at this time, I will move on to the CSO basin maintenance. Who would like to begin that one?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, mayor.
Yeah. I wanted to bring this subject up to all of you because you need to be aware of a situation. A few years ago, the city of Dearborn Heights felt that Wayne County was overcharging us on the maintenance costs for the CSO basin, which is approximately at Telegraph and Edward Heinz Parkway. And consequently, we went out for bids, and we received more than one bid, and we found out that there were independent contracts. And we found out that there were independent contractors out there that could do the job for significantly less, like a hundred and fifty thousand or more a year. So we entered into negotiations with the county, and I felt quite frankly that they were not negotiating in good faith. Uh, the cost got up to over a million dollars that we owed them. And I received a call from their corporation council. And I had indicated to them that we wanted to contract this out or have the county charge us some, an amount comparable to what independent uh, contractors could do the job for. I was assured that if we paid the million dollars that was due, that they would uh, enter into such negotiations. That individual that I talked with left about four months later uh, for a, a, a private job in in industry as a corporation, as a, an attorney. And consequently now, we've been trying to negotiate. I I assume Patrick uh, is somewhere on this phone call. And the extent of the negotiations have not been going very positively. They've been, the county is just kind of one excuse, in my opinion, after another, to not move this along. Consequently, the amount is billed up again that we owe them, uh, another five, six hundred thousand dollars. I have been refusing to pay it. And I wanted to make all of you aware of the fact. Now, it's booked in the books of a liability, so financially, we have recognized that expense each year, but we have not paid the bill. And so the reason today was to let the council know that there's a significant beef in regards to the costs related to the CSO basin. And we all want to get water rates lower, and this is one of the ways that we could do that if we're paying a competitive rate for the basin. So with that introduction, I will let Patrick, if you're on the somewhere there, I'd like to have you talk about this in more detail.
Yes, I've asked him to unmute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try and give you a brief background about how we got to where we are today with Wayne County on this matter. The city and the county had entered into an agreement whereby the transfer of O N M to the city could occur upon the happening of certain events. Those events included the submission of an O N M plan to the county, acceptable to them, cause M D Q, now Eagle, to issue a new permit relative to the basin and would list only the city as the operator and not city and county as co-committees. Another requirement was to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, an I G A with Wayne County, to really formalize and put in the, in stone who had what responsibilities going forward for the basin. Subsequently, that the city entered into an agreement with Wade Trim to provide this O N M service on behalf of the city once the transfer was complete. Problem we've had is that the transfer, ability to conclude the project has been hampered by a lot of Wayne County actions and inactions. Uh, for example, the counties continue to say that before they transfer to go through, there has to be a permit issued by, uh, now it's Eagle, U G L A, removing them as a, an operator of the system. Nothing that's slowed the project down is there's been a substantial change of personnel at Wayne County, the environmental section, where we make some progress negotiating the terms of that agreement. And then that person's gone or retired or reassigned. So that's been another sticking point in terms of getting this deal done. Um, in addition to the center governmental agreement we're negotiating with Wayne County, they've continued to take action or no action for weeks or months at a time to give us something to review from their standpoint as far as what they think is important going forward. Now, to get Wayne County to conclude the transfer, as the mayor pointed out, the city's been withholding payments to Wayne County for their O N M services. Uh, presently, uh, they claim that the city owes them roughly eight hundred and sixty one thousand dollars uh, for work that they have done, which has not been paid for to date. On March, pardon me, on December third of this year, uh, the city took the following initiatives again to try and get this project moving. Um, we offered to Wayne County a rationale for payment of this outstanding balance for services rendered. We believe that the appropriate number annually for the city to pay the county is roughly a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety three thousand dollars to two hundred and eight thousand dollars annually. Uh, these are figures that were derived from Wade Trim's bid for getting the O N M contract going forward. We have a high degree of confidence in those numbers, and they're substantially less than the county's been charging us over the years. I forwarded to Wayne County Corporation Council and Assistant Council uh, yet another revised draft of the intergovernmental agreement to see if we can get moving along those lines. Last, uh, because of these delays, I understand the group from Wade Trim who is going to be providing these O N M services to the city has now left Wade Trim. So that's another element that we have to deal with as far as going forward and finding a new operator. I talked, uh, earlier this morning with Wayne County's Assistant Corporation Council. He acknowledged receipt of our letter and our position on the payment of anything that's owed to the city, pardon, to the county. And has now kicked that over to uh, people in management and budget to take a look at the numbers that we're proposing. It's a fair resolution on an annual basis for the services they provided. So right now, the ball is back in Wayne County's court. Uh, I would be surprised if we hear anything from them uh, before the end of the year because of the holidays and COVID issue. Uh, but I'm going to keep after them because now I think we finally have a path going forward. The county seems to not be pushing so hard on getting a permit from Eagle, taking them off as a co-comittee. So I think because of that, we now have another opening, another window of opportunity, see if we can get this deal wrapped up. I would pass it along to Dan Brooks if he has any comments to add. And then I'd be happy to take questions from the council.
Mayor, did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, I was uh, wondering if Dan Brooks was going to make a comment on it. I I think Patrick sized it up real well. It's just that we're being way overcharged by the county. I, um, it just, uh, why should we pay them three hundred thousand a year when we can get the same thing done for around two hundred thousand a year? That's, that's a big difference. And while we've asked for the detail, we're not really sure that they can justify the extra hundred thousand dollars. So therefore, uh, I've not been willing to pay them. And I just want to let all of you know the position that we've been taking on this particular matter.
Councilman Muscat, did you have a question?
Uh, it's more of a comment or a question regarding to Mr. McCollough or our mayor. Th- th- this is almost similar to what uh, the county did with the Down River Treatment Plant, is it not? I, I mean, they're, they're wanting charges so much money that just, it's crazy for let, to let them do it.
Exactly. You, you understand it. That's exactly the point.
Yeah, so it's, it's better off that we do go and try to find a, a contractor that will do it that that's going to be much cheaper. We're going to have to do it anyway sooner or later.
Like the libraries also.
Thank you.
Questions before we end this? Can't this time, let me see what time it is. Um.
Six forty-four.
Okay, we're going to ask everybody to come back a few minutes before seven so we can start our meeting at seven.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Studies.
I can take, I take public comments on this, my chance.
Um, alright, you know what? I'll, I'll open it to public comments on this. Is there any public comments in regards to this? I don't see anything. Does anybody else? Okay, at this time, I, our study session is over. Come back a few minutes before seven, and we will begin our regular meeting at seven. Thank you, everyone.